Meeting for the city of Wyoming, Minnesota. To order, let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. Member Jaeger, member Onsted, member Luger, Mayor Iverson are present. Member Schilling is absent. I'm going to read our usual message. Good evening, we greatly appreciate our staff, council and residents adapting to our teleconference format. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's meeting will be held under Minnesota State Statute 13D dot zero two one. That permits a public body to hold a meeting via telephone or other electronic means. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For members of the public, the meeting is being live streamed on the city. What of Wyoming YouTube page. The Wyoming City Council meeting will be recorded as part of the public record. After each agenda item is read and staff gives a report on the agenda item, I will call upon each member. Individually, if they have questions on that particular item. If you wish to make a motion or second emotion, please state your name first. All votes on all items will be completed by a roll call. To meet the standards for the state statute thirteen D dot zero two one, thank you. Um, Mr. Linwood, it says we're recording, but are we live?
I am, I'm trying it again, it actually didn't go through the first time, so we're gonna kind of give it another shot here. It kind of stalled, oh, please just give it a second.
Maybe it has something to do with the outage yesterday, last night, internet. Pretty bad. Yep, Park Board couldn't, Park Advisory Commission couldn't even. Uh, during a meeting.
Right. Hasn't gone live yet, it's just. You know what, I'm gonna have to try it again, I apologize, it stalled out again, I'm gonna try it.
Member Onsted, do you want to lead the pledge tonight?
I will.
Put you on.
I don't have the best singing voice.
That's all right.
Plus, I have to look over my, 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 which shoulder, this shoulder.
Yeah, I got it up, I have it up on my screen as well.
Oh, yeah, I do see that now.
Yeah. It did a quick change.
Okay, you're ready, I'm ready.
Okay, we'll just give Mr. Linwood a few more minutes.
I tried it again, and it looks like it's stalling out again, I'm not quite sure what the technical issue is. Cause I keep looking at our other YouTube page, it just keeps saying that it's preparing, so. Are looking at the actual page to see the live stream, so.
Do we want to just continue then and note that it's? We can't get it live streamed, or you can keep working on it, what would you like to do? Mr. Linwood, do you want to weigh in on that?
There's no, there's no requirement that the meeting has to be live streamed. So if we can't get it to work, I think this has happened to us once before. The, we are recording and I'm presumed Mr. Linwood will be able to load the video immediately after. So if it, if it doesn't work, we can still proceed with the meeting.
We'll do that, because it just timed out again, it's, yeah, there's some, some issue, I don't know what, but there is an issue, so.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and keep recording. So, um, do you want me to start over, or we're just all good?
The, the meeting was called to order, I, I think, you know, we, you read it in the record, we can just proceed after.
Perfect, all right, sounds good, all right. Um, so we determined the quorum, that we do have a quorum. We're now going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Led by member Onsted, for those of us who aren't speaking, if we could mute, that would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, member Onsted, I appreciate that. All right, open forum, Mr. Linwood, do we have anybody for open forum tonight?
Mayor Iverson, we did not.
Thank you, we'll move on to our agenda. Item number one, consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Wyoming, Minnesota City Council for April twentieth twenty one. If there are no questions or comments, we do need a motion to approve.
Member Luger, so moved.
Member Luger makes the first, do we have a second?
Member Onsted, second.
Member Onsted makes the second, I will do roll call for. I'll do roll call, uh, member Jaeger? Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is, I, it does pass. Number two on our agenda, consider approving the minutes of the work session meeting. Of the Wyoming, Minnesota City Council for April twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. If there are no comments or questions, we need a motion to approve.
Member Luger, so moved.
Member Luger makes the first, do we have a second?
Member Onsted make.
Member Onsted.
Member Onsted makes the second.
Member Onsted makes the second, roll call please, member Jaeger? Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
Member Onsted, I.
Thank you, and member Iverson is an I, it does pass. Consent agenda, there's just one on that consent agenda, I'll just read it, number three. Consider authorizing the payment of recommended bills, payrolls, journal entries for the period of April twenty first, twenty twenty one to May fourth, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Onsted, so moved.
Member Onsted makes that first, do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes that second, roll call please, member Jaeger? Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
Mayor Iverson is an I, it does pass. Acknowledgement receipts of reports of officers, boards, commissions and department heads. That would be four, five, six, seven and eight on our agenda, does anybody wish to pull an item from the boards? Nope, then we'll go ahead and move on to communication, number nine. To consider a letter of support for the Chicago County Highway Eight project for a federal. Rise grant, I'm not sure who's doing this one, Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor Iverson, thank you. Mayor Iverson, members of council. This is a letter of support that our Chicago County Engineer and Public Works Director Joe Triplet has asked the city council to consider tonight, you see that attached letter. Essentially, they will be applying for a twenty-five million dollar federal raise grant, uh, with that was formerly that build grant program. Um, it's all for the financing of the Highway Eight reconstruction project. The local support is a part of that application, so they are asking. The council would consider this letter and it identifies how the importance of that highway. Corridor and that the, the construction improvement, how it would improve that. That, that motorway, uh, for all that corridor safety, economic development, etc., so. Asking us to approve that letter, uh, back to Mr. Triplet to be sent off with that application.
Right, and you need a, a motion to support that, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we need a motion. To approve the letter of support for the Chicago County Highway Eight project for a federal rise grant, I'll make that first, to make it easy. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes that second, roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, so approved. New business, number ten, to consider resolution twenty-one dash oh five dash three eight. A resolution approving plans and specifications. And ordering advertisements for the bid for the twenty twenty one street improvement project. I think Mr. Erickson's gonna take that one for us tonight, that's great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, our staff had been previously authorized to prepare plans and specifications. For the twenty twenty one street improvement project. Staff has completed the plans and specifications and are asking. The council accept those plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bits. We have a resolution in the packet. And staff does recommend moving forward with that.
All right, um, I will call each individual members for questions, member Jaeger, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Member Luger?
No questions.
Member Onsted? I'm new. Brett.
No questions.
All right, perfect, and I have no questions either. So we need a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash oh five dash three eight. A resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for the bids for the twenty twenty one street improvement project, do we have a motion to approve?
Onsted, so moved.
Member Onsted makes the first. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes the second, roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, so approved. Um, number eleven, hiring of Steven, is it Ketchridge? Yep, for the maintenance worker one position with public works at a rate of twenty-six. Twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents, Mr. Almgeil, I think you're gonna be discussing this with us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Iverson, as they call the members. The process that they completed for the hiring of the maintenance worker one position. This position is replaced an employee who resigned. Staff went through the twenty-two applicants. And we conducted first and second interview. Steven Kestrich, who had been selected as our top candidate. Steve is currently working for the city of King Rapids, in the storm and. Creek Department. Previously worked in the city of St. Paul for twelve years. That's where he completed his heavy equipment enrolled scholar program through LTAP. LTAP is a local technical assistance program through the U of M. Both of these are major consequence, they take several hours of classroom and hands-on training. Based on Steve's qualification, ways, history and work experience. Staff recommends starting Steve at step three, twenty-six eighty-one per hour. With a six-month probationary period for the local forty-niner contract. And without, take any questions.
Sorry about that, Mr. Almgeil, did you say, um, and I might have missed it, did you say that this was budgeted for?
No, correct me.
Perfect, okay, thank you, that's my only question, member Jaeger, questions?
And this is a replacement for the gentleman who resigned in March.
Uh, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, member Onsted?
No questions.
Thank you, member Luger?
No questions.
All right, and that was my only question, so we need a motion to approve hiring of Steven. Ketchridge for the maintenance worker one position with public works at a rate of twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
Onsted, so moved.
Member Onsted makes that first, do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes that second, roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor, Mayor Iverson is an I, and we're looking forward to meeting the new employee. We're gonna go on to, um, number twelve on our agenda to consider the extensions. Of the extension of working hours for the under, for the company. Kurtley, Mr. Linwood, how do you say that?
Keekly.
Keekly, that's correct, Keekly Underground.
I don't know, I think I understand like Thompson or Smith or something lately, so, okay. Underground for the East Viking Boulevard Utility Construction Project. Um, is Mr. Linwood or Mr. Erickson taking this one?
Sir.
I can, I can cover this item, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Our contractor for the project, Keekly Underground, has requested an extension to the working hours. Our current working hours are seven AM to seven PM. And they would like to move forward with the working hours of seven AM to, to nine PM. And again, those are, are Monday through Friday, Saturdays are eight to five. We did not receive any, uh, working or extension requests for that, and so. Again, uh, looking to change those working hours from seven AM to seven, or to nine PM, and so. Staff is supportive of this change, we know that this project is quite disruptive. To traffic in particular. This is not in a residential neighborhood, uh, this phase one where this work is taking place. Um, and so we would like to expedite, um, the, the completion of this portion of the project and. We certainly stand for any questions that you may have, but we do feel that. Based on the nature of the project, the location of the project. And the request that we have before us, we think that it does make good sense to extend the working hours in this case.
Mr. Erickson, it's probably gonna be hard to really tell how much, um, sooner this project will be. Will get done by then, but any estimate on, on what that might be?
You know, um, contractually, we, our contractor's just getting started now, they'll be starting excavation of the sanitary sewer. Maybe as early as tomorrow, but more than likely Thursday with the sanitary sewer extension and so, or the upsizing. We're, we don't have a lot of experience with this contractor, uh, just to determine the rates. They're thinking it's gonna be about three weeks to complete phase one. And, um. You know, then there's another stretch for phase two. Contractually, they're responsible to get out of, um, that, that first phase one and phase two by June nineteenth. And they're thinking three weeks for the first phase, I think, um, I think they should be able to do that, um, we'll know a little bit more, but as far as. Uh, you know, there, there need to backfill each evening and not leave an open excavated pit. And so the more they can get done each day with that pit open, I think, I mean, ultimately it will save days, not, not hours. Um, and so I think, uh, certainly from that standpoint, it is probably beneficial. Considering the impact that we, we know the, the residents and people traveling the corridor feel every day, uh, currently.
Perfect, thank you, um, I will, um. Go to members for questions, member Jaeger?
No questions.
Member Onsted?
I have one question, I just am concerned about this setting precedence, uh, future projects, particularly in residential areas. Will this set a precedence?
So we've had requests in residential neighborhoods before and we've, uh, turned those down. And so I think, um, I think we have that precedent there that when we have residential neighborhoods. It's, it is more challenging to have these type of extended working hours, and so I'm confident that this. Decision lies solely with the council and is a project by project basis.
Excellent.
All right, member Luger?
I have no questions.
And I've asked my questions, we need a motion to approve the extension of working hours for. For the vendor to, for underground for the East Viking Boulevard Utility Construction Project, do we have a motion to approve? Member Luger makes that first, do we have a second?
Member Onsted makes second.
Member Onsted makes that second, roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Yeah.
Member Luger? All right, and Mayor Iverson is an I, that does pass. All right, uh, this one might be a little bit easier, so number thirteen on the agenda to consider a council work session on May nineteenth for twenty twenty one at six PM. Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, uh, we are continuing discussion on a few items that we've been, um, discussing in our last work sessions and we just. Um, are asking council to set another, um, work session for, um, some of the items that we talked about actually at our last one. Just continued discussions on our facilities and streets and the long-term plan. Old Architect will have some updates on the recommendations and, um, for asking council for feedback on. Potential design, if that's the way the council wants to proceed and evaluate those. Um, we'll continue to evaluate, we'll have some, the council had some questions regarding, uh, the race and equity training and we'll have, staff will have some answers for council on those, how they'd like to proceed with that. And lastly, the American Rescue Plan, we are, um, patiently awaiting, um, some of the guidance from the Treasury. Um, and other entities through this and we're, uh, sincerely hopeful that it appears right now that we'll have. Um, a much better handle on all that guidance come that date on Wednesday, May nineteenth. So we would ask the council, uh, if there, if that works for everyone scheduled, just to make a motion for the work session on the nineteenth at six PM.
Okay, let's start with, uh, member Jaeger, does that date work for you and time?
Yes, it does.
Member Onsted, does that date work for you and the time?
Yes, it does.
All right, uh, member Luger, date and time work for you?
Yes.
Okay, and I, uh, member Schilling said that works for him as well, so, um, I need a motion to approve the council work session on May nineteenth, twenty twenty one at six PM. Will it be by Zoom, Mr. Linwood, are we gonna be, uh, in the chambers?
It'll be via Zoom, on Mayor Iverson.
Thank you, all right, we need a motion to approve.
Member Luger, so moved.
Member Luger makes the first, do we have a second?
Member Onsted makes the second.
Member Onsted makes that second, uh, roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, that does pass, and. Number fifteen, to consider resolution twenty-one dash oh five dash thirty-nine, oh, sorry. Number fourteen, to consider a proclamation for National Public Works Week from May sixteen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty one. Ms. Dumis, are you doing this one, Mr. Linwood? I wasn't that prepared, I guess, figuring out who was gonna do what, sorry.
Uh, that's all right, uh, this is just a proclamation, um, acknowledging the contribution of, uh, public works, workers. Um, and the contributions that they make to our communities.
All right, that sounds great, we've done this every year, right?
Yes.
I believe we've done it every year.
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, so I will, uh, go around, see if there's any questions first, member Jaeger, any questions?
No questions.
Member Onsted?
No questions.
Member Luger?
No questions, we know our public work staff works pretty hard.
Yeah, they do, and I, uh, already asked my questions, so with that, we need a motion to approve a proclamation for National Public Works Week from May sixteenth. Through the twenty-third, twenty twenty one, do we have a motion to approve?
Onsted, so moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Looking for a second, do we have a second? All right, I'll ask one more time, do we have a second?
Oh, member, yeah. Member Nanki Jaeger will second.
Oh, all right, thank you, so we do have a second by member Jaeger and we will, uh, do roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member, uh, Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, that does pass. Number fifteen, to consider resolution twenty-one dash oh five dash three nine. A resolution accepting the donation from the First State Bank of Wyoming to the Railroad Park History Walk in the amount. Of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, who's taking this one, cause I could talk about it all night long.
I think, uh, Assistant City Administrator Dumis and I will just talk about it, we, we kind of gave council the heads up in regards to some of the. Successful fundraising that we've done, but we actually did receive a check from the First State Bank of. Uh, Wyoming for their generous, extremely generous donation to the master plan for Railroad Park and that history walk, so. Um, I think we just wanted, usually these are consent items and we have donations, but we felt with, uh. The large, uh, very generous donation that this, uh, deserved a little more recognition, so. Hence, uh, just an opportunity for council, uh, to provide comments and. I know that we're staff as far as we've gone through that and just doing some of the work that we've done and. We're just, uh, just very excited and very grateful for their, their donation.
Yeah, I, um, I just don't have really the words to say on how generous that donation is and. Um, what it's gonna mean to the city and to that park, so. I will say myself, thank you to the First Bank of Wyoming, the Zarubas. Um, and every bank employee for letting this happen or making this happen for us, so pretty excited about that. Uh, any questions, member Jaeger?
No questions, would just like to again thank, uh, First State Bank for their very generous donation.
All right, member Onsted?
Uh, I have no questions, I'm just very thankful that, uh, they're working on this project. Uh, the bank has been a part of this community for over a hundred years and I think it's very, uh, appropriate for them to. Be considering the history walk, uh, donating to that, I'm just very excited about that. Considering that I've done some work on this project already and I'm really looking forward to it.
Yeah, lots of great ideas, we've had a lot of conversation back and forth over the years, haven't we, Brett? On how wonderful this park can be, so, and the park, the Park Advisory Commission too, just phenomenal on this whole thing. All right, um, and then member Luger?
I have no questions, but like everyone else, I'd like to extend, extend an enormous thank you to First State Bank, uh, this is, this is huge and this is really gonna be. Something amazing to have in our community and wow, are we grateful, thank you.
All right, so we are gonna need a motion to approve. Resolution twenty-one dash oh five dash three nine, a resolution accepting the donation from the First State Bank of Wyoming. To the Railroad Park History Walk in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and I will make that first, so do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
All right, member Luger makes that second, roll call please, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Onsted?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I on that, so, and I, I do want to thank the, um, Park Advisory Commission as well, so. With, um, Brett and Claire and, um, all the members, because they worked really hard on that, so. It's good to see that that's coming to fruition. All right, um, council reports, we are gonna start, um, with member Jaeger.
No report, thank you all for watching.
All right, and member Onsted?
I was part of the work session last week and, um. I want to say that, uh, oh, and. Excuse me, and, uh, the, um, Planning Commission last week also.
It was kind of a weird week, right? It was, it was a strange last week of the month, so, yeah, so, all right, and, um, yeah, member Luger?
Um, I attended the work session last week, uh, the Park Advisory Council, as we've already noted, will be rescheduled for Monday. Um, and so, hopefully the next council meeting, I'll have that report.
All right, thank you, uh, so I attended the work session as well, I attended the Planning. Commission meeting, uh, that's moving right along, I'm pretty, um, happy to kind of see those plans coming together. Um, and then just been working with the Chicago County mayors and the other mayors within the state of Minnesota. Um, working against some language that's in a bill that was offer, authored by, um, Senator Corian. Um, and co-authored, um, another bill that it got lumped into. Um, so we're working very closely with, um, I can't tell you how many mayors, it's been, um, great to work with all of them to get this language taken out. So that's taken up a lot of my time as well. Um, I believe that's it, um. Paul, um. Can you talk a little bit more, you've got a few things coming up, um, the bike rodeo and do you want me to talk about the public safety barbecue? Or would you like to discuss that?
No, I can let you, uh, discuss that one, but we do have the bike rodeo coming up on Saturday, the fifteenth. From ten to noon at the elementary school, we didn't have it last year, so I know we get a lot of energy and excitement behind it, so the public is, um, encouraged to come, bring your kids out, it's always a great time, free bike helmets. Free bike inspections by the, uh, cycle shop in Forest Lake. And, um, and some skill testing to get your kids ready for the, for the bike season.
Perfect, so I'm gonna be there and I'm gonna invite and, uh, any kid out there that would like to, uh, race the mayor. While they're out there, so that might be kind of fun, I'm sure you're all gonna beat me, but, uh, I will definitely be there again. So, um, looking forward to May fifteenth. And then, um, the other one that's really exciting, this has been, uh, is gonna be put on by a neighborhood, so some residents. Um, Wyoming, it's a public safety barbecue, June fifth. Um, from eleven to four, it's two-six-two-zero-five, Galen Drive. Um, everybody's invited, uh, Mr. Linwood, do you need to post that, just in case we have all our council members there?
We can make a note, there may be a quorum on that day, certainly, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, so, um, it's very exciting that, um, we have so many residents that support our public safety. Um, our police and fire and, um, are putting this on, so I think, um. We're just very fortunate that, that they're doing this on Galen Drive. Uh, if anybody has any questions that, on that, they can reach out to me as well, so, um.
And then I think, uh, Mayor Iverson, I believe we also have, maybe, uh, Ms. Dumis can talk about it as well, the, uh, touch truck event that's coming up that same day beforehand?
Yay, all right.
Yes, we are planning on bringing together local businesses who have really cool vehicles that we're going to be having on display. You know, last year we did the Don't Touch a Truck Parade, so we're excited to get kind of back to a little bit more normal this year. So we'll be having details about that event coming out in the next few weeks.
Will that be at the police station again?
I don't think it's officially been finalized, but I believe that is the plan.
Okay, and please tell me we're not going to put me up in that really tall bucket again, going up 150 feet or whatever crazy height that was?
We, we promise, we promise we won't do that. It's actually a taller one, so.
All right, wonderful. Okay, and Mr. Erickson, do you just have any quick updates regarding all the construction? I know there's been a lot of angst and we're really trying to address those, those questions and comments that we've had. Is there anything you'd like to kind of add to that and give some calm?
Yeah, I certainly can do that. And staff is working hard to try to address various concerns and questions that do come up. We spent the better part of our staff meeting prior to the council meeting this evening trying to work through some mitigation factors. We're looking, working with MinDOT even to have their staff come out and analyze the existing traffic signals and the operations that we see occurring during the morning and, and evening peak hours to see what we can do to help move, move traffic through the area a little bit better, provide gaps for access off of the side streets onto 61 during those peak hours. And so we're continuing to refine and, and make modifications. Some requests, of course, you know, may make sense to residents, but from an overall safety standpoint, may not make sense. And so we're evaluating each of those questions and concerns that come up on an individual basis as a team and working through and trying to address those that we can. And unfortunately, everything we do is not going to make this a painless situation. And so unfortunately, the nature of the work and the location of the work is, is problematic for that. And so we're doing our best. We're going to try to work through this project as quickly as we can. The first two phases from 61 West to Fallbrook are the, are the, the biggest impact on our traffic. And so once we get to that next phase east of 61, that's going to lighten things up quite considerably. And so we're anxious to get that. We made some actions this evening to expand working hours to try to expedite that. And so if you do have questions or concerns for those that are listening, feel free to reach out to city staff and we'd be happy to, to address your questions and concerns in the, in the manner that we can.
All right, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate that. Chief, happy one more question. Your, your team is out there trying to persuade people not to sweet, speed in those neighborhoods, correct? Because that's been a little bit of an issue.
Yeah, we've spent a lot of time out there and will continue to do so while there is a traffic detour route. From just the feedback that I'm seeing personally and from our staff, we're really not seeing a lot of speed issues. We certainly are seeing significant volume issues, you know, on residential streets that weren't necessarily designed for that purpose. But we have validated that people are running the stop signs and our officers have been out there issuing citations aggressively doing it. And we will continue to do that and monitor that route and try to control that traffic as much as we can. We did add some signage out there for no parking to give it a little, you know, keep vehicles off the side so that the traffic flows better. We did move the, you know, the speed display sign out there, asking people to slow down in those sections. So we're certainly utilizing everything that we have personnel and, and whatnot to manage that to the best of our ability. And, and I think we are making an impact.
Perfect. All right, thank you. I believe that's it. I'm looking at everybody. Shake your head if that's all we got. And then what, oh, no, Mr. Erickson.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to quick highlight with the East Viking Bridge. I did indicate that in our, in my staff report that we did receive bridge bonding for that. It's eligible costs are for the bridge structure itself, but $260,000. So we're really thrilled and excited about that. That's going to, you know, be, you know, tremendous saving for the city. I did want to highlight that in my staff report, I did indicate for 2021, and we're actually looking for that to be incorporated into our 2022 construction season. So I wanted to highlight that, that typo that I had in my staff report. The, the funds are eligible in 2021, but we're looking to implement that in 2022.
That's very exciting too. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. So that's a huge savings for the city, right? So really appreciate getting that done. All right, um, so am I seeing anything else? I don't think so. So with that, I will adjourn our council meeting at 7:36 PM. And I hope everybody has a great week. Thank you.
Thank you.